And I just want to say a special thanks to Pastor Diddle. He is always there looking for opportunities to support Jessamine County Schools, to support this community. I don't know if everyone here has had an opportunity of meeting this man, but I just think that you're just one of those people that are always looking for opportunities to go that extra mile and just truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'd like to call the regular March meeting of the Jessamine County Board of Education to order. Welcome, everyone, to the library at Rosenwald Dunbar Elementary School. Mr. Moore, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Board Chair Stevens Scrivener.
Here.
Vice Chair Bobby Welsh. Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
Deborah Hood.
Here.
We have four present. We have a quorum.
All right. Mr. Moore, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Actually, we have somebody that's going to do a much better job than I could. We have Katie Abshire, who's going to lead us today.
Awesome.
And I think our location is required here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You guys are going to get to meet her later. We're going to make the suspense build up here before you get to her.
All right. Jessamine County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. That's our mission statement. And let's all keep in mind that's why we're here this evening. Have we had a chance, board members, to look over the agenda this evening and see if there's anything that needs editing? Are we good with it as is?
We are good.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as is. Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. We had a chance to look over the board meeting minutes from our February the 22nd meeting. Were there any revisions needed to those? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those minute meetings? Meeting minutes, I should say.
The February 22nd, 2021 board meeting.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. Mr. Moore, construction update.
Yes, we have an update on our career technical education renovation.
Yes. You have a handout in front of you from Margie Jacobs talking about the career tech ed. I wanted to draw your attention to the fifth line down. There were said estimated work complete at 98%. That's really exciting. There is just one section at JCTC that they moved into at the beginning of last week, and the anticipation is that all major work will be done by the end of spring break. So that's really exciting to be to that point. You'll see a list of items to be completed in the next 30 days or completed in the past 30 days and then work to be completed in the next 30 days. Much of the work that's going to be done in the next 30 days is at JCTC. There are some things with EJHS, with their intercom system that we're working on, trying to get it to a better location. We've got some issues there we're dealing with, as well as there's a little bit of work in the cafeteria, which will be done, it'll be over spring break as well, at West Jessamine High School. You will see on the back, all these pictures are from JCTC since that's most of the work. This is the old agricultural rooms down in the bottom. They were the old lab rooms. They have now been turned into biomedical classrooms. You see new casework in there. The furniture in those rooms is still the old furniture. The new furniture is to be installed over spring break. So that's being delivered and installed over spring breaks. They were able to move from the old rooms down. The bottom two pictures is the old biomedical classroom that they are now going to be working on to make it the career readiness and also some special ed rooms, some resource rooms there. So anxious for that. That's the last bit of work to be completed, is that section right there. And we will be out other than punch list items. So very exciting. Do you all have any questions for me?
When were we slated to do it at this point originally?
Well, we, well, there was a slate to be done at the end of October. So we're six months, five months, six months ahead of where we were. We weren't even supposed to be done with West High until about this point. So.
This is one of the positive. If there are positives of COVID, yeah.
The ag department was supposed to be moving over to West High at spring break, and all the work at JCTC was supposed to be starting at spring break. And, but we've gone that much faster. And I'll be honest, COVID really helped tremendously in this, just having kids out of the building. But the fact that they could work throughout that entire time, and we had no breaks in any of the work, which was really good. So. Just keep that in mind when Jason's project doesn't necessarily do this. I just want you to keep it. Sorry, Jason.
All you need is a pandemic to beat him, Jason. It's all you need.
Sorry.
So under my report, this is going to be a really fun board meeting. We do have a lot to celebrate. We've kind of intentionally put a few things on delay because we really wanted to experience, wanted you guys to experience this in person. And our first celebration is these young ladies that are in front of you. And this is the West Jessamine High School girls volleyball team. And you are looking at the 46th district champions, the 12th region champions, and the first ever 12th region volleyball team to ever go to the final four. And they are the semifinalists, were the semifinalists for the 2020 year. So this, these are the, these are the ladies that brought on those recognitions and the talent that we have here in Jessamine County. I do want to introduce our coaches. We have head coach Bill Byrd with us. And then we also have our assistant coaches, Amy Gross and assistant coach Scott Harvey. So we appreciate what you folks have done to support these young ladies. And I would love to give you an opportunity, Coach Byrd, if you'd like to say anything special about these young ladies that are with us.
Well, I mean, Mark Miracle's here. I don't, I said, did I need to be prepared to say anything?
You can blame me.
I always want this. But no, I tell you, there's no group of girls that work hard, that have each other's back, that you see their shirts that says family. They truly are family. They, they, like I said, have each other's back. They're a team. They work hard. They work hard off-season. They all play club. They do whatever they've got to do to represent this school and school system to, well, they're confident and speak for themselves. And I'm just so proud of them. I can't say enough about them. And thank you all for this. This means the world to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to pull that off with this particular year, so this is one that you're never, ever going to forget. But just in case, we do have some certificates for you young ladies that, I'll just actually hand these to Scott Harvey so that he can sort them out. I'm not even going to try to act like I'm going to figure that out. And then also want to give to our coaches, this is a Jessamine County coin. And this is a tradition that was started a few years ago. And this is recognizing individuals that have done exceptional work. So I just wanted to give this to each of the coaches.
Thank you.
And do you want to hear brave enough to say something about the season or about your coaches? That's good.
This is our only senior this year, right?
Well, try to take my mask off.
Please do.
I mean, this is my last year playing for West. Like, it was just such a good year. So I haven't done it without any of these girls or the coaches. And it's just really like a good feeling to get as far as we did this year.
Thank you.
You said one senior?
Well, only one senior, right?
So maybe see you back here.
So we're loaded, yeah. If God will and we can stay healthy and all that stuff. I want to say one thing as well. This is their, the last three years, they have been on the academic awards for the, for the state for volleyball, for ADAC, and the United States Marine Corps. They've been recognized the last three years for having accumulated 3.30 or higher as a team. So that's just, that's awesome.
That's incredible.
Well, thank you all very much. And if you want, it may be easiest to just sneak right out.
Thank you.
Congratulations, girls.
Great girls.
Very impressive. Very impressive. Who? Who? Well, I mean, Delia plays soccer with my daughter, and my daughter's tall, and Delia looks down at her. I mean, it's physically gifted, very physically gifted.
We have another team sneaking in here. What's that? Okay. Okay, good, good. I hear the crowd. We have a lot of parents that have snuck in. You guys are a whole lot quieter than students are.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, there you go. Unless you're cheering these on. I recognize some faces, even masks.
You recognize some eyes.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So what you have before you right now is a relatively new team to Jessamine County Schools. And this is not a sanctioned Kentucky High School Athletic Association sport, but this is an official club, and this is the Winter Guard. And this particular guard has been in existence, Angela, I think.
This is our third.
Third year, okay? And what has occurred over the past three years is truly exceptional in that this particular group of students have actually advanced now to the international semifinals. So this is a very talented group of dedicated students. And we do have both coaches on the outside, and they get along really well because it is a husband and wife combo. This is Angela and Adam Miller. And I know this was an idea that they brought to Jessamine County and weren't exactly sure how it would work out, but they felt like they had some interest and had some talent. And what they developed is truly exceptional. So really excited to have this group of students being recognized today. And Angela and Adam, if you would like to say something in particular about the season or this group, I would love it.
Also, this group, we represent fourth grade, grade. And all of them have, except for one, has gone to college and wanted to join us once he went to the middle school. So we're thrilled to have her with us. We teach at the elementary level, just the basics. And then as they progress, they can try out to be in this group. This is the juniors competitive group. So this is a tryout ensemble. We did compete virtually this year. And our first time out, we received an excellent rating and made it to semifinals. Our second time out, just this weekend, we received another excellent rating. So we are the new hot buzz in the winter guard world because everybody's looking to see, how is this working? That you're working with third graders and you move up with them as they progress. You allow them to progress with you. So we're, we're staying on our toes to keep up with them as they get older and move on to the middle school and onto the high school.
Yeah, we actually have another group that's about this size. It's elementary, it's third, fourth, and fifth grade. And they actually filmed also because of COVID. They were like, okay, we can do this. So we really went for it. They're going to perform in tri-state virtually. But they're about this big, but it's third, fourth, and fifth graders. I'm really excited for them. I'm real proud of them. You know, this, it really is an honor. I mean, juniors division didn't even exist until this year, but an elementary line essentially getting into, and it is a true national semifinal. And there's one class, everybody in the whole country, you hear eighth grade below. And there's 12 people in right now. I'm going to guess that this regional weekend, which we got, we couldn't, we actually could have qualified, but we didn't because we can only be in one semifinal. But I'm going to guess there's eight. So there's going to be, out of all the middle schools in the whole country that could have competed, there's probably going to be 20 in the semifinals.
And we're also competing, I'm sorry, against other countries as well. So we're representing the United States.
Yeah, raise your hand if you are in a small ensemble. We didn't, yeah, real quick, the small ensemble, that division didn't exist. And we just, we were like, let's just go do it. And so we did a small ensemble, and that group is a one-shot deal. That group made finals.
They're going to national finals.
They're going to, they're going to the finals. And so it's kind of like a solo ensemble, but this is like the group division. So this is great. So I'm really proud of them.
We're super proud.
So how many have been part of this program for a year?
One year.
One year.
First year.
Two years or more.
Two years. I was born that grade. Grade. Raise your hand if you're in the fourth grade.
Eight's already with us last year.
Yes, fifth grade, none. Sixth grade, a bulk. Seven, eight, there you go. So that's the makeup.
All right.
How many of you had just filled out your teacher's? Just kidding.
I'm going to hand these over to Coach Adam so that he can pass these out. But this is a certificate that is given to you by the board to show our appreciation for your accomplishment. So we're very proud of you. And then I'm also going to give both of our coaches a Jessamine County coin. This is a coin that really recognizes individuals for doing exceptional things. And I want to give this to each of you. Thank you very much for what you've done.
And thank you to parents for bringing your kids.
Thank you. Thank you to Mrs. McNeil as well.
Anything, anything you want to say?
No, we're just really, really proud of them, so.
Okay. And I'm going to let any brave person that they want to. Do you want to share anything about your experience?
Do you like it? How did you feel when you first made the meeting?
Next year, too?
I'm sorry?
Something you see yourself doing next year also? Are you going to even go further next year than you did this year? Oh, I see a lot.
We'll say, we'll keep you apprised.
Tell them what you throw on your rifle. What do you throw? You can do a double really solid, and he can do it. He'd get his triple.
They spring right here from throw a single and a half and catch it in the splits.
Yes.
We would demonstrate, but still.
Thank you so much.
And thank you all, the parents, for supporting these students. We appreciate it. Yeah, now that. That's exactly right. Okay. And the next one that we're going to recognize tonight is Katie Abshire. Katie, will you come up here with me? Yep, thank you. So Katie is the young lady who, is a young lady who entered the Rosenwald Dunbar student. And she's the young, one of the young ladies that entered the competition, the Kentucky School Board Association's part competition. And Katie, in case you're not aware, every year, there's a big conference, and there's probably four or 5,000 people that come to this conference. And every single school district gets to compete the same way that you did. And the finalists are presented in this beautiful walkway where everybody moves past and they get to experience that art. And Katie is the one that won that award in Jessamine County Schools. And I don't know if you've seen it yet, but if you look straight over, that is her artwork.
Oh, that's awesome.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, it is. So I think this is the first time, maybe, that you've gotten to experience and see firsthand the artist who accomplished that. And this is something that we get to admire every year, but this year is really special because we got to connect with you in person to see it. And obviously, you're a very, very talented artist. Is this something that you're hoping to do as a profession? Or is this just a hobby?
I don't know. I guess it could be, but I just don't know.
I was a big art fan, too, but I was never that talented. And that's serious talent. So we wanted to recognize you and just let you get to see the faces of some of the people that will enjoy that artwork at the conference. Okay? And I've got here also a certificate for you. And this is something to just show our appreciation. And then also for winning this award, I'm going to give you one of the Jessamine County coins. And again, this is something that's really special. We don't give these out to a whole lot of people, which is for the people that do something really special and exceptional. So this is a coin that I'm very excited to get handed to you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Both your parents, okay? Do you want to introduce us to your parents?
This is Cindy Abshire, and that's David Abshire.
Did one of them artists, too? They have the talent?
Her dad was an art teacher.
So, yeah, you've got it from your grandpa.
How did Nicholas Bell Elementary?
Congratulations again. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Katie.
I would love it.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the way, I don't think this is going, so. Jessamine County, just the way that you all support the arts and the sports as well. Cindy's dad was the first art teacher here in Jessamine County. And so that's been a big part of our family. But it's just, it's also a blessing to see the way that you all handle and support the additional extracurricular, that's part of Jessamine County here. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And believe it or not, we still have some stuff to celebrate. Mary, can you come up? This is a story that is absolutely worth sharing. I, you know, we, when we think of Jessamine County Schools, it's easy to forget the adult education part of our programs because we are focused a lot of times on preschool through 12th grade. But I think our Board of Education has always respected the fact that we have a strong adult education program, and there's lots of successes that come out of that. And Mary Newton shared a particular story with me a couple weeks ago and asked her if she could just come and introduce us to the student graduate that she was talking to me about. So she's going to talk a little bit about, and she's with us today.
Good to see you all again. Is this okay that I?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Well, so like everyone else in the world, adult ed struggled last year with COVID. You know, most of our students are also parents. So when the schools were closed, our students had to stay with their kids. And so it made it really difficult for them to make it headway in their progress toward their GED. One of the good things that came out of all of that was GED testing service implemented in online Proctor format. I've been in adult ed for 23 years, and I never thought I would see the day where you can take your GED test from the comfort of your own home. But it's a big step. And so Christina is one of our students who did that. She took her entire GED from her home. And she has a son, an adorable four-year-old son, who's a student at the Early Learning Village. She was talking with someone in the Family Resource Center just about some of her goals, and it came out that she needed a GED. And so the Family Resource Center at GEL plugged her in with our program, which is exactly how it's supposed to work. And so Christina told me some things about her testing, and it was really great. One of the nice things about this online Proctor format is you can take it whenever you want, not just business hours. You can take it at 2:00 a.m. So it's really great for people who work odd shifts or have kids who are awake. And so if you want to tell them when you took your test, I think this is great.
I actually took my test at like 5:00 in the morning when my son was asleep because you can't have any distractions. So, yeah, I wouldn't have been able to get it if I didn't have that convenient.
Yeah. And so Ben in the back is shooting some footage. Christina shot a promo today over at the adult ed center so that we can kind of spread the word and encourage more students to take it. Some people are a little hesitant about technology, and there are some steps that you have to take. But Christina said it was really not that bad. So you have to show the Proctor all four walls of your room. No one can walk in. If your dog walks in, they'll shut the test down. If you look down at your lap, they'll shut the test down. Christina told me that she was taking it at 5:00 a.m., and she got a little tired and kind of started leaning, and her head went out of the frame, and so they gave her a warning. But it was 5:00 a.m. Yeah. So we actually went out to her house today and shot some footage out there of her actual test environment. Tell them about where you took your test.
I actually live off of Sulfur Well and Beck Lane out in the country. We have five acres out there and about 30 chickens. So it's like the heart of Jessamine County, I feel like. So it was cool to get them out there and see the, where I took it. And then I actually took it in my son's room on his little Paw Patrol desk. And so they got some footage of that.
Yeah. So that's dedication, having your son asleep in the other room, sitting at his Paw Patrol desk way down and taking your GED test. So, yeah. We're really, really proud of Christina and hope that more students will follow suit. And so we're making a major technology purchase, to purchase some laptops so that any student who doesn't have that can borrow one from us in some mobile hotspots. So just really trying to remove some barriers first.
Any questions for Christina? I admire how much you had the judgment. It sounds like you did a pretty full plate.
Yeah.
Obviously, you were dedicated to the work. It's not an easy test at all.
Yeah, it's something I've been pushing off for years, you know, raising a son. You know, I don't want him to go to daycare, so that kind of wasn't an option. And then, you know, COVID hit, and it was like, I really never even thought about it until she brought it up that day. And I was like, no, no, you mentioned it. I probably do need to do this, so.
Tell them what your plans are next step.
I'm actually planning to go to college and get my state registered nurses' aid course so that I can work with terminally ill patients one day because my father passed away last year, and I actually took care of him before he passed. So that kind of gave me the passion to work in the medical field. So that's what I'm going to do.
That's awesome.
On behalf of the Board of Education and everyone here, I would like to congratulate you again on the accomplishments that you've done. And again, I love you, and we want to, we want to congratulate you. So proud of your work. Thank you. And the next, Lindsey and Chris, if you just want to come up right here, that'd be great.
These are tough acts to follow.
It is. So I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit. I'll see you guys before Lindsey and Chris get started. To you guys before Lindsey and Chris get started. And I'm going to start first by saying we took a little bit of a dip to get Lindsey here.
I told you that was useless.
She's totally confused. So, I'm going to take just a moment. And she must have a really big fan of me.
I felt like I'd been pulled back in for the last few. It's going to be tough.
Okay, so Jessamine County, I just grabbed my wrong note, my wrong sheet of notes. But Jessamine County has been giving out an award now for the past four years. It was something that I started and it really was just feeling like there are times when people do something very exceptional in Jessamine County Schools and they just truly need to be recognized for that. And that's what we're doing today because we're celebrating Lindsey Mulkey for her career. I think this is year 14 and for the work that she's done in support of our students and our community. Lindsey, for those of you who don't know, was a graduate of East Jessamine High School. She still is a counselor at East Jessamine High School. And I think that while I said she's been an employee now for 14 years, I think her heart has been all about Jessamine County Schools for much, much longer than that. When I first met Lindsey, the population of students that she was supporting, our students that had the most significant cognitive abilities. And the thing that probably stood out to me was that she wanted everything that she could possibly get for and out of all of her students. And she completely transformed that classroom and truly helped move those students academically to that next step. So, just to see what happened in a year's time for those students and with those students was exceptional. So, I learned pretty quickly on that we had a very special teacher that had a big part for students. And as she's transitioned through Jessamine County Schools, she has also become a very exceptional counselor. You heard a story, a success story about a young lady who got recognized for the Governor's Scholar Program a couple of years ago that was a homeless student. And that was, a lot of that success was because of the coordination that this young lady's done. So, you know, I've continued to be impressed by her. I think that all of her students would say she pushes them as far as she possibly can because she loves them very much and wants to see the very best out of each student. It's fun to watch her in the hallways because she's chasing them down and barking orders and making sure that they are doing the things that they're supposed to. So, Lindsey, this is something, don't get too mad, Chris, because I did something to do this to just get you here. But I'm just so appreciative of what you've done. You've meant the world to me and I know you've meant the world to the students at East Time. And I think it's very safe to say that you consider a Jaguar to be top priority in Jessamine County and you just do an exceptional job of supporting our students. So, I'm very proudly giving you the, this is the Circle of Excellence Award for Tradition and Innovation. And I'm going to give you an opportunity, if they're willing, to say something.
So, I'm a rambler. If you all know me, I'll just go on and on. Where's that list at?
It's over there. It don't matter.
Yes, if you had heard her seventh or sixth, fifth grade day of graduation speech with the principal doing this, you would know.
But there are obviously, especially now, a lot of people in this room. I'm such a crier. But obviously, my parents, who have always been my biggest fans, Matt Moore, who hired me, obviously. This tall drink of water right here, he is incredible and a great partner in this life. Also, an educator, works at Nicholsville Elementary, is a music teacher, just an incredible human being, kind-hearted, very supportive. And honestly, whenever I have a crazy idea or want to do something with school, he's, you know, behind me 100% and just be like, I'll take care of the rest. You go do what you got to do. My sister right here is also one of my biggest fans. It's crazy to go from, you know, children beating her with a hairdryer to having that sisterly relationship that we have now. Also, I consider a sister is Paige and my niece, Brynlee and Michael. Again, big supporters. My in-laws, Daniel's parents, well, that's what in-laws mean.
Chris is also a teacher at Jessamine.
You all probably remember her, Ms. Mulkey, worked at Jessamine County High, then worked at the Providence School and retired there. Ms. Patty, honestly, Chris throws stuff on us all the time and somehow we get it done together. So, a wonderful partner. And then two of my best friends right here, Jill Cooper and Elizabeth Roy, both educators at East Jessamine High School. But so many of you guys in this room, one of the reasons I'm still in education is Michelle Reynolds, when a couple of years ago, I just wanted to be like, I don't know if this is a good fit for me and really supported me through some tough times. Michelle Gadberry, when I was, as a special education teacher, supporting me. Had students or parents of students here. So, I mean, I consider Jessamine County a family and I got to be honest, this timing is impeccable because you do so much and you feel like, you feel like you're just, you know, not making progress. So, this is good. I'd like to at least acknowledge my list if Chris would.
It was a ploy, Lindsey. It was a made-up list. The list didn't matter.
I do want to take an opportunity to brag about my school because East Jessamine is my home and has been my home ever since I went there. I did not mention my children. I should probably do that. This is Charlie Mulkey. This is my daughter. She is me in a little form. And this is my, this is my son, Declan. He has the red hair, but he is his father in, again, baby form. But just a couple of things about East Jessamine that makes it so special. The people that are there make it a wonderful place to be. They work incessantly for our kids and every time, like I go or have an idea or I want to do something different, the first, one of the first questions that Chris Holbert will say to me is, is it what's best for students? And I think that's so important to put our students first. And you guys know that, like I'm preaching to the choir here, right? But I do want to talk about some good things happening at Jessamine, East Jessamine High School.
Because you prepared for that.
I want you all, I want you all to watch our social media because we are trying our best to normalize the rest of the school year. We're going to be working on Decision Day where we celebrate our students and their post-secondary goals. We're working on prom and there's a meeting after school tomorrow. We're working on supporting our students with FAFSA and their post-secondary goals and trying to connect them with college and college counselors. So, even despite all the things that have been happening with COVID, we are doing our best to work around it. So, East Jessamine High School is, again, one of the greatest places on earth, next to Disney World, of course. But I will stop there because this is a long list. But again, I'm just very grateful to be here. I wish I was more prepared so I don't sit up here and ramble, but I do love this place. I love our kids and this is where I will be, you know, for the rest of my, you know, the rest of my career for sure. So, thank you all.
I have a funny feeling that you're going to give Chris a hard time.
I am mad because even while we were sitting over there, he kept grabbing my list and he was like memorizing numbers. And I'm like, he was really laying it out.
Not a good secret number.
Really selling it.
All right, thank you all.
Congratulations.
She had to read them, let that list accomplish. Yeah, she probably will.
And that's it for my report.
I was going to say emotionally, I can't take anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
I was struggling just through the team celebrations and whatnot and then I was like, oh, that was good. We needed that. Do any board members have communications this evening? Okay. No audience communications, I take it. All right. The Board of Education will have a brief recess at 7:13.
District Finance Corporation, Mr. Moore, will you call the roll?
Board Chair, Stephen Scribner.
Here.
Vice Chair, Bobby Welch. Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
Deborah Hood.
Here.
We have four present, we have a quorum.
All right, we've got a very short agenda tonight with just one item on it. So, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Second.
All right, I think Denise got in there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we have a copy of our meeting minutes from our, I believe it was the February 22nd meeting, is that right? If I can find it, I had it a second ago. Okay. Does anyone have any suggested revisions to the meeting minutes from February 22nd? Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as is?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, since Bobby's not here, who wants to handle the motion to adjourn the School District Finance Corporation meeting?
I'd love to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all right. Meeting adjourned at 7:15. 16, we'll reconvene the meeting of the Jessamine County Board of Education. We're now to the consent agenda. We have 26 items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any board members have any questions or comments about those?
We'll just mention that this would be the official approval for the school calendar. So, if this is approved, we will post that tomorrow. And then also wanted to identify there and just say thank you for the generous donation to Project Graduation. That was an event that we missed last year, but one that we are hopeful that we're going to get to plan this year. We have a group of parents led by Jennifer Hatton, who's helping work on that. So, again, in years past, you guys have donated $1,000 and appreciate the $2,000 to really kick this one off the right way.
Absolutely. And I want to call out as well, a few donations in here. The $2,300 from KCal, Doug Fain and his group do such a fantastic job to help out Shani's Homeless Program and then Brandy Tatro as well, the $5,000 donation, $5,000 donation to Jessamine County Arts on the Green. Just amazing to see that kind of philanthropy to our programs, so. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's say no. All right, a single action item tonight, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. This is the approval of a lease for a fiber line at the PAC Center, which is the gymnasium area for the Providence School. And Josh Fleckenstein did some homework and we were previously paying Windstream $1,000 per month for this service and he did some investigation and has identified that we could work with Charter and reduce that significantly. Actually, it would be an annual savings of $6,200 per year. So, it's my recommendation that we approve a 60-month term contract with Charter at the rate of $517.50 per month.
Way to go, Josh. Any questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve action item one?
Motion to approve action item one.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, who wants to do the honor?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Or second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we're adjourned at 7:19.